Meeting call to order. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore is absent. Everyone, please stand for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As implied in the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, P.L. 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Crest, the Coaster, and the Star Leisure on January 3, 2023, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are now on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes, I have something. Just give me a minute here. Okay, thank you. Good evening and happy holidays to everyone. The City of Asbury Park has received a score of 100, the highest score possible in the Human Rights Campaign HRC 2023 Municipal Equality Index, which means different aspects of LGBTQ+ inclusivity and municipalities around the country. Cities are rated based on nondiscrimination laws, the municipality as an employer, municipal services, law enforcement, and leadership on LGBTQ+ equality. And for the full release, please visit the City of Asbury Park website dot com. That's all for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman.
So I just want to thank everyone who in Asbury Park who helped to make this season beautiful and great for so many people, our staff at DPW for the gorgeous decorations, staff and chamber for the beautiful Christmas tree lightings, our police department who took so many of our children out holiday shopping. There's just so many people to thank, Community Karma for their backpack drive, which impacted over 700 families, all the faith leaders who have provided food and clothing throughout the season as well. There's just too many people to name, but also thanks to all of you who support these initiatives, and I wish everybody a very happy holiday season and a wonderful 2024.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton.
Thank you. I also want to wish everybody a wonderful holiday and a happy and prosperous New Year, and thank all the people that Eileen already thanked.
And more.
And more.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
So to Angela's, thank you for bringing that up, and I have to thank you, Lisa, who I know spent a lot of time working on that application, so kudos to you, greatly appreciated. Our score, you know, went up probably 20 points because of your diligence, so that is very much appreciated. We're only four or five in the state. And so Mayor Moore is not here, I'm sure as many of you all see. He underwent surgery, he's on the mend, is looking forward to be being back sometime in January, and wants to wish you all a very happy holiday. You know, if you want to shoot him a text, but he's, he's on the mend. I'm getting calls, so. That's it.
Thank you. Matters from the City Manager.
I'm nothing.
Matters from the City Attorney.
I'd just like to wish Donna all the best with your term.
Thank you, Fred. Thanks, Fred.
Much appreciated.
At this time, we're on to a proclamation. The Council would like to present a proclamation to our City Manager, Donna DiGero.
City, this is a proclamation from members of the City Council and the mayor who have outlined the City Manager's lead as whereas Donna DiGero has been a committed public servant for the City of Asbury Park and whereas Donna has served the City of Asbury Park since 2019 and has brought a wealth of experience and insight, and whereas Donna has proven herself to be a valuable asset to the City of Asbury Park for the vast knowledge of its infrastructure and key to the continued revitalization of Asbury Park, and whereas during her tenure, Donna was resilient in her ability to stay in the city through the COVID-19 pandemic and the city's economic recovery, assisted in the establishment of rent stabilization, was instrumental in beginning the construction of a long-planned new firehouse, and oversaw the participating budget process with the residents, and whereas she maintained the character of Asbury Park's outlook by facilitating numerous community events and initiatives, each such as mural projects, Arts Council, the senior now festival, Asbury Park's music and film festival, and Asbury Fest, and whereas the City of Asbury Park wishes to express its sincere appreciation to the Donna for her outstanding performance and dedication to the residents of our community. Now therefore, here is all that as the Additory Park City Council do hereby thank Donna DiGero and wish her the best of luck and her recovery.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. So I'll actually go somewhere else. So it's been a privilege to work with the amazingly dedicated staff members of the City of Asbury Park. Throughout my tenure as a team, we have had many accomplishments and always prioritized the quality of life for our residents, whether it be navigating a global pandemic, implementing programs and services to assist with the challenges of mental health issues, minimizing the impact of food insecurity, providing enrichment and employment opportunities for our units, or maintaining and improving our infrastructure. Employees with the undying support of council have made, have been outstanding in their committed abilities. The guidance of our professionals, and some of them are here, Jay, thank you for your support, have also been instrumental. I must also thank the numerous volunteers and agencies within our community, such as the Chamber of Commerce, still the facilities here tonight, their continued support and action are integral to our city, and I've been grateful for their dedication. I wish Mrs. Zara the best of luck in her new position, and much continued success to all that are part of the City of Asbury Park. It's been my pleasure to serve the community of Asbury Park and to have the opportunity to be a small part of such an extraordinary city. Thank you all. Thank you.
You want to do?
I'll say, we did a picture before you upstairs.
Ah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. We're now on to public participation. May I have a motion to open up the meeting to the public?
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public participation portion is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Again, state your name and address. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Sylvia Sylvia, Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to first thank everybody for everything that you guys did to help with the menorah lighting and with the tree lighting downtown. Those are the, the two events that the Chamber runs. I know there's a lot of tree lightings, menorah lightings, and we still have Kwanzaa coming, but those are the ones that the Chamber does that we would absolutely never be able to do if not for the help from the city and particularly our police department, the fire department, and DPW, which is now, I think, just another part of the Chamber. Those guys are absolutely unbelievable, and I wanted to make sure to wish everybody a very happy Christmas. Hanukkah is over now, but I hope if you celebrate that you had a wonderful one New Year and, and Kwanzaa coming up, and then wanted to make, I'm a little, a little rough today. I'm, I'm sad that Donna's, I'm sad Donna's leaving. I, it was about four years ago right now that you became our interim City Manager, and I, you know, I Google everybody, and I tried to Google you, but I didn't realize you had all those extra vowels in your name, so I wasn't, I wasn't really able to find you, so I was like, I'm just gonna have to meet her, and, and I did, and you were, you were lovely from the beginning, and then you became our permanent City Manager, and about a minute later, COVID. And it, what a baptism by fire, and the way you handled such an unprecedented time. It's, it was wonderful that you were professional and knowledgeable, but that particular time also required compassion, and you've had it in, in just space. You just are an unbelievable person to be able to navigate through all of that. People were dying, and businesses were struggling and failing. We all thought it was going to be a few weeks and then we'd be back, and it was going to be hard enough to get back from that, and when it turned out to be what it was, you were present, and you were visible, and you were responsive, and every time I reached out to you about something that my businesses who, there were really many of them just didn't think they were going to survive, and some of them didn't, but then other ones also came back, and they did that because Asbury was surviving through it, and that wouldn't have happened without you here, and I thank you for all of that and for being a blessing to me still, and I look through old text messages, and you, you get me, and I'm allowed to drop my bad language sometimes, and you're, and you're nice to me about it, so I appreciate that, and, and all that you've done, so thank you, and don't go far, and I know where you live.
Thank you, Sylvia. I appreciate you, too.
Hi, Rita Moran, no wait, haven't you? I also want to say, I think I, one of my nasty phone calls, I said goodbye to Donna, but I want to wish her good luck.
Thank you.
And all that goes with it. I know what you've been through, I understand, and it's not easy having five bosses, I know. So I just want to wish you good luck and hope you have, the rest of your future is happy and you enjoy yourself.
Thank you.
And meanwhile, Happy New Year and Merry Christmas to everyone.
You, too, Rita.
Thanks, Rita.
Thanks, Rita.
Good for you, Rita. Anybody else? We're going to close public.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nancy Phillips, and I am a resident of Neptune, actually, but I follow the City of Asbury Park very closely. The City of Asbury Park is an embarrassment to the town of Monmouth County, okay? Let's start with the Housing Authority. Councilman Anderson, you witnessed firsthand how foul the Asbury Park Housing Authority there, how foul they are. You were standing right next to me when the meeting was closed and the public was not made aware. How are the elderly supposed to zoom into a meeting? How? They don't have knowledge. What they did was illegal. What they did was foul. I reported a possible asbestos in the whole entire building, okay? This called enforcement. The Housing Authority, okay, is, they, what they're doing right now is called elder abuse. The way the elderly are living, okay, is implorable. What the mayor needs to do when he's out of surgery, okay, he needs to get him off the bench, and he needs to take a walk to people's apartments in the Housing Authority. He need to see the roaches firsthand, okay? He need to test for possible asbestos. He need to walk up and down Lake Avenue and look at the homeless people that's everywhere. The mayor needs to investigate, where did that $2.7 million go that the Housing Authority robbed? He is aware of it. He told the Asbury Park Press he knows, but yet everybody in the Housing Authority still have a job. The mayor needs to inquire as to why the high school cannot pass basic skills. Why is the mayor on the bench? He does not care about anything unless pertaining to those million-dollar condos or the beach front. How can you sit on a bench and don't know that it's discrimination right downstairs in the police department? How can you sit on the bench and not know that Officer Michonne Love sued the police department for $1 million? How could you sit on the bench and not know that it's homeless people? How could you sit on the bench and not give a damn that the Housing Authority robbed the community of $2.7 million? Why is he in office? He needs to be dethroned, and if you need a new mayor, I'll apply for the job for somebody still. I'm done here. Next.
Thank you. Anybody else? Move to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All the participation portion is now closed. We're now on to the minutes. I have the executive meeting minutes and regular meeting minutes of the December 6, 2023 meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Fred, I'm going to say one thing really, really quickly, not related to public session, but just so everyone knows, we have some openings. I thought you were doing it, Eileen. That's okay. We have, the City of Asbury Park, we're probably the only one who's got, you know, we're a, a city of one square mile, but we have 20 boards, committees, and commissions. It's all volunteer. Those people are the people who really keep the city running in a lot of ways. We have openings on multiple boards. If you are interested, please fill out an application. It's on the city's website. Indicate what board that you are interested in. Not all of them have openings, but many of them do, and we just want to strongly encourage people to do that throughout December and January, because throughout January, we're going to be doing appointments.
Sorry. Thank you. We're now on to consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on consent agenda are presented collectively to the City Council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On consent agenda, we have Resolutions 2023-547 through 2023-548. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
We're now on to individual resolutions. Resolution 2023-549, resolution approving payment of bills.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-550, resolution authorizing emergency roll-off truck repairs needed at the Department of Public Works.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-551, a resolution approving change order number one for the wastewater treatment plant underground storage tank removal project.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-552, resolution approving change order number two for 2023 pavement and sidewalk improvements project.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-553, a resolution approving change order number nine for Memorial Drive Improvements Project.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-554, resolution authorizing the release of a performance bond for 1156 Springwood Avenue, block 803, lots 1 through 14.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-555, a resolution appointing an acting City Manager, Joanne Booth.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Congratulations, Joanne.
Congratulations.
We're now on to ordinances. Second reading public hearing of ordinance 2023-39, ordinance of the City of Asbury Park amending and supplementing subsection 7-40.5 entitled License Fees of Section 7-40, Private Parking Lots of Chapter 7, Traffic of the Code of the City of Asbury Park. Fred? Sure.
So this ordinance amends the section of the city code that deals with private parking lots, and basically after a study, it brings Asbury's fees in line with what other towns are charging. Other towns charge based on the spot, and this will impose a flat fee of $10 per spot. Previously, we had a charge for X number. If it was up to 25, it was one fee, and then from 25 to the next number, say 45, it was the next fee, and it wasn't based on the spot. We're now charging $10 per spot, which we found to be consistent with how other towns are handling it, and which we feel is more financially advantageous to the city.
May I have a motion to open up the public hearing on ordinance 2023-39?
Move it.
Move to open. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Ordnance, uh, public hearing on ordinance 2023-39 is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and your comments may be regarding ordinance 2023-39 only. Move to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2023-39 is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2023-39?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
We're now on to ordinance 2023-44, ordinance of the City of Asbury Park to repeal section 2-76 entitled Award of Public Contracts of Article 10, Regulation of Public Contracting Contributions to Public Offices and Entities of the Code of the City of Asbury Park. Fred, are you able to provide a brief summary on this?
Yes. Earlier in the year 2023, the state legislature adopted the Elections Transparency Act, which preempts the field when it comes to the issue of public contracting reform and what's commonly known as pay-to-play. Previously, municipalities could adopt their own ordinance that could be more stringent than the state regulations, but with this new act, the state has basically taken over the field and says that their provisions now preempt, and the DCA issued a local finance notice that recommended that towns now repeal their local pay-to-play ordinances because now the state regulations control. So we're basically just withdrawing and repealing our local pay-to-play restrictions as a result.
Thank you. May I have a motion to open the public hearing on 2023-44? Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public hearing on ordinance 2023-44 is now open.
Could you explain that again? What did that mean?
So the state now has taken control over how much professionals like myself and Mr. Harzel, that our firms can contribute to the candidacies of local government officials. Previously, the state regulations allowed towns to have their own local requirements that were more stringent than the state regulations, but now with this new act that was adopted at the state level in 2023, the state has knocked out all local pay-to-play regulations and said, we now have preempted the field, and towns can no longer have their own individual restrictions that are more restrictive than the state. And so the DCA has issued a notice recommending that all towns that previously had their own local restrictions that they repeal, which is what we're doing now. So we have to follow the state regulations now. We can't have our own.
How does that affect us?
Well, the, the state regulations do not allow contributions within 12 months of the award of contracts or during the term of contracts, and they place limitations on the types of, if a contract is awarded through a fair and open process versus a non-fair and open process, and everything is now done through, at the state with these state regulations.
So what does that do? Leave you out?
Well, no, I'm still governor, but not by the local restrictions, by the state restrictions.
There's still a state pay-to-play, but the individual pay-to-plays are now gone.
We can't have an individual local pay-to-play ordinance anymore. The state now has taken over.
Move to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2023-44 is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2023?
Move to open.
Second.
Move to adopt. Oh, adopt. Sorry.
That's okay. Move, move to, second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
We're now on to ordinance 2023-45, ordinance of the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth and State of New Jersey authorizing the execution of a lease agreement with Asbury Partners LLC and Cajun Fish Holdings LLC for block 4307, lots 1, 2, and 3, within the Asbury Park waterfront redevelopment area. Donna, would you be able to provide us with a brief overview?
Certainly. This is a lease agreement to relocate the beach equipment to the parking lot adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant. We're leasing this from Cajun Fish Holdings, and this is a relocation due to the sale of the current location where our equipment is currently stored.
Thank you. May I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Move to.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We're just moving equipment, Rita, from one spot to another.
I know. What was it before?
So it was across from the wastewater treatment plant?
On Kingsley.
Yeah, that lot, so now we're moving it across the street in the parking lot between North Beach and the wastewater treatment plant. Move to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2023-45 is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2023-45?
Move to adopt.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
We're now on to ordinance 2023-46, ordinance constituting the 2023 transportation update for the City of Asbury Park and amending and supplementing Chapter 7 entitled Traffic of the Code of the City of Asbury Park. Our Transportation Director, James Banano, can you provide a brief overview for us? Thank you so much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, so this ordinance is a few recommendations from the Parking Committee to the City Council. It adds four new 15-minute parking spaces that weren't already existing. It also codifies some 15-minute parking spaces that were existing in our network but not in our code, just kind of missing, you know, cleaning up a little bit. It's intended, the 15-minute spaces we're adding are intended to serve a few businesses that don't have much parking available to them, specifically along Main Street by Springwood Avenue, where all parking was removed when Main Street was reconstructed. It also adds three areas of the town, three parking areas, that are supposed to be intended for taxis and rideshare vehicles. The intention is to work with companies such as Uber and Lyft to have their drivers only use those areas when picking up, to avoid cluttering roads such as Kingsley Street or Main Street when picking up when popular restaurants and bars close.
Thank you. May I have a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-46?
Move to open.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Public hearing on ordinance 2023-46 is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2023-46?
Move to adopt.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Thank you. And finally, ordinance 2023-48, ordinance of the City of Asbury Park amending and supplementing Chapter 15 entitled Rent Leveling Regulations of the Code of the City of Asbury Park. Our Director of Community Development, Robert Goodman, will provide a brief overview of this ordinance.
Good evening, uh, council.
Good evening.
We've had enough to discuss this previously, and the issues that we're looking at tonight in the ordinance are consistent with what we discussed. Mostly, they could be revolved around simplifying and streamlining the administrative process for managing this ordinance. It actually reduces a number of small transactional fees or eliminates them, and it takes the filing of rent updates from within 25 days of when they occur to it being done annually. After having administered this for two years, we realized there was very little risk by doing so, and it simplifies the process. It's also in conformance with what our software can do that tracks the necessary information to administer in the ordinance, and it's setting this up for by 2025 to be able to have landlords directly enter this information into the system without having to submit any paper forms or, you know, double checking it, will be able to automate the validation and verification of rent updates by early 2025.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert. May I have most of the public hearing on ordinance 2023-48?
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2023-48 is now open. Move to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2023-48 is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2023-48?
Move to adopt.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yep.
If anyone has anything else, we're on to adjournments. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Merry Christmas.